Okay, I think we are ready to go. Thank you to attendees who are giving their evening to learn a little bit about becoming a board member in District 34 this presentation tonight. With board members James Dolan and Natalie Jack Torowitz and Superintendent Dr. Dane Deli. We'll give you some background into District 34, things that are important for board members to know about our schools and our community. And then discuss the role and responsibility of a board member and the process of pursuing election to the Board of Education. We are recording this session. We will record the presentation so that we can share it out later. But we will have a question and answer period at the end. We will not be recording that. So if you have questions, those won't be recorded so that you can have privacy and confidentiality with your questions because names will appear if you ask questions. But please use the Q and A feature for questions at any time and we'll collect those for the end of the program and I will turn it over now to Dr. Deli.
Thank you, Kathy. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's session. I will own probably about the first third of the slides that we're going to share this evening and it's really going to be in the name of sharing and reviewing perhaps for some, just some of some of the basic information about our district that's so important about District 34 that really makes us who we are. And I, it's always logical to start with, you know, how many students we serve in our district and currently we have 4,310 students. Now, at any given moment, you could check and, you know, that could change by, by a few. But that's where we stand today and this graphic is really designed to depict for you. What you can see is a trend. So our enrollment as a school district has declined over the last few years, anticipated. We work with a demographer that helps us anticipate general trends in our student enrollment. So this is not surprising to us, but it's important information to have. You know, from one year to the next, a shift, either a decline or an increase dispersed over eight buildings, which is what we operate, sometimes is significant and other times it's hardly noticeable, but these are the young people that we're here for. And so it's important to just keep a perspective on this. Kathy? As everyone I hope knows, Glenview is a very diverse community in many ways and, and we'd like to just call out some of that for you. And the data on this slide and other slides is pulled directly from the Illinois School Report Card. But really this slide is, is shared with you to depict what our student racial demographics look like. And over a span of about 15 years, you can see that there has been shifts in what those percentage breakdowns look like. You can see for yourself two or more Asian, Hispanic, Black and White over the time that you, you see shown there. And so it's, it's just a reminder that we are a changing community. We celebrate our diversity. We, we love the fact that we are an inclusive school district and that we are here to serve and meet the needs of all children. We also have as hopefully most people know, quite a bit of language diversity in our community. We know that there are 58 different languages spoken in the homes within our school community and we know that through home language surveys that are administered each year. 16% of our students are EL learners, English language learners. So English is not their first language. And you can see the breakdown to the right, which sometimes I think people find surprising from time to time when I'm speaking and sharing information, but you can see our Spanish speaking, Korean, Mongolian, Russian and Polish speaking families are listed in terms of, you know, their frequency as listed there and our, the graphic there just shows you. You know, from around the world where our students and their families come from. Again, a celebration for us. We are also an income diverse community. This slide depicts over a several year period of time the percentage of low income students that we serve within our school district. Currently it's about 23.4%. It hovers around that as you can see historically. But this is an important graphic and understanding for us as well. As we develop our programs and we try to reach as many students as we possibly can. So what's ahead? Anyone who's been following our, our board news or our board meetings know that there's quite a bit going on in the district. So I just wanted to take a few moments and highlight some of that for you. And again, I apologize if it's a review. But our school district does have a rather robust strategic plan. It has run from 2019 through 2024. And we will begin a refresh, if you will, a revision to our strategic plan, which will begin in 2024. And there'll be more information coming out when, when the time's more appropriate about the steps that we're going to take to revise that plan. Kathy, was it our intent to share this clip?
Sorry, I was muted. No, I just wanted to let folks know that on the strategic plan website, there is a video that gives an overview.
Thank you. Yeah, I just didn't want to, I didn't want to miss a cue. So thanks. We can move on. So as, as we have shared on numerous occasions, our mission to aspire, explore, discover and connect guides our work. We are guided also by our core values, growth and aspirations, diversity, inclusion and equity, relationships and respect and financial stewardship. And we, we are very committed to our plan. It guides the work that we do. And it's not always front facing, but it's, it really does guide our work. We have specific outcomes and objectives associated with all learners, all staff and all families. And it really does serve as guideposts for our work. So on the facilities front, much of this hopefully speaks for itself, but we were very fortunate to have the support of this community as we have in so many other instances with the help of a capital referendum. And this really has allowed us to make many improvements across the district with our facilities, some of which intersects directly with educational programming. And I'll never miss an opportunity to thank our community for, for the support that they shared. The, the successful passage of the referendum has meant a lot of ensuing planning and working associated with these many projects that are really scheduled over multiple years. So we just completed quite a bit of work in summer of 2022 at our primary buildings and at Springman. Much of which is evident just on the outside. If you were to drive past, there's quite a bit also inside the buildings that, that has improved. We do have quite a bit of work slated again for the summer of 2023. And we shouldn't forget about the, the continued work that will happen in summer of 2024. So there is quite a bit of work still to be done. It, it's great, the momentum that we've taken and what we've been able to accomplish. But there is still work to be done. One of the aspects of this that has helped us from a fiscal perspective is our, our bond rating that we had from Moody's, our financial profile score from ISB. And the fact that we were able to issue our bonds in such a way that we were able to save $37 million in interest. And so the first round of bonds that we sold was at 0.9% interest. The second round was, I believe, 1.9%. And so the timing of those bond sales were such that it really benefited the district's taxpayers in that interest savings. Kathy, you can Thank you. And as I indicated, we have not only improved facilities and, and the addition of full day kindergarten as a facility, it's also now a full day kindergarten program. So there was quite a bit of work that went into the educational aspects of moving from a half time kindergarten program to a full time kindergarten program. And so it was really a combination of both space and programming. And there was quite a bit of professional development that was required in order to make that that migration, including some of the new learning spaces that we have at Springman specifically as it relates to STEM and the new science labs that we now enjoy. Kathy, you wanna?
Sorry, I think my internet's a little slow.
Yeah, for a minute I thought it was me. That's fine. But District 34 follows the curriculum standards that have been adopted by the Illinois State Board of Education for implementation of public schools. We're guided by the school code. We're guided by our own local policies. But making sure that our professional staff is prepared to meet the needs, the learning needs of our students is very important to us. We take it very seriously. We understand the need to adapt to our current environment while at the same time looking ahead. We have always and will continue to honor the whole child, both in rigor of academic learning as well as the social emotional learning of our children. And we're very dedicated to adult learning as well. So our, our late arrival schedule is designed specifically to help our staff to grow, be trained and retrained and develop their, their skills in the work that they do with children every day. It, it all works toward fostering a positive climate and culture and to equitably align instruction across all district programs across all buildings. And so while we're very concerned about the fidelity of educational programming within a building, we're also very much in tune to making sure that there's a consistent experience for children and their families across the district. And with eight buildings, that's arguably sometimes challenging, but it's a commitment that we have and, and we bring our best work to that. And I think at this point, Natalie, I believe you're going to take the next slide or two and we're going to start to drill in a little bit more specifically on the role of the school board as a whole and as of individual school board members. Thank you for listening.
That's right. Am I, can, am I being heard? Just want to make sure everybody can hear me. Okay, thank you. So many of you I'm sure have been to board meetings or watched our meetings on Zoom. And so you have a little bit of a glimpse of what we do at the board table. But what we do at the board tables actually just a part of what we do as board members. And sometimes it's the smallest part of what we do as board members. But technically speaking, our number one and most important job as board members is to hire our superintendent. We hired Dane six years ago and since then we have a continuous cycle of monitoring progress of the district and of the work that Dr. Deli does. So we engage in a goal setting process at the beginning of the school year, we get a mid-year check-in and at the end of the school year, we do a superintendent evaluation. So that process is sort of like the board of directors hiring the CEO and monitoring his work throughout the year. Dane is really the CEO of our school district. And so he's, he's the boss of everybody else. We hire him and and monitor him. And I think the next slide James is going to take.
Thanks Natalie. This is really just a simple depiction of kind of what Natalie is trying to articulate with regard to governance, right? And the board aligns and establishes policies and the administration, Dane and team are responsibly execution or the procedures, the operations of the district. And that's really one of the things that I think is important to articulate with regards to what the dynamic and relationship are between the board and the administration is that the strategy, the policy are separate from the operations and execution and Dane and the team have done a phenomenal job during his tenure and from the the board have a lot of confidence in him and the team going forward. Next page. So the other kind of main aspect with regard to board responsibilities is, is financial stewardship. And we are effectively the fiduciaries for the, at least the use of taxpayer dollars within the district to align and execute and use those dollars with our strategic goals and within kind of the constraints of our available resources. We're not trying to bankrupt the district because of some idealistic vision, but rather we kind of work with the administration to understand their budget and their procedures and all the different aspects. And so if anybody was part of the last or participated in viewing the last discussion, one of the assistant superintendents kind of articulated, here's our draft budget, we're going to continue to refine that budget, but we spent a lot of time working through what are the kind of budgetary considerations and, and options to maintain the excellence within our district. The board also works through, as you see here, the tax levy and overseeing the work of the superintendent's committee, which is includes the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee. It's an independent group of individuals within the community that work to understand and effectively visualize where are we financially as a district with regards to both our current accounts and the projected, we'll call it stresses or spends within the district to know where we are and, and our financial, we'll call it health. Dane highlighted earlier that the, one of the really important aspects of passing the referendum was our credit rating. And that's one of the elements that, that the, the board paid a lot of attention to is the, we'll call it the financial health of, of the district. Natalie, back to you.
Yes, so kind of getting back to the role of a board member with regard to other board members. Obviously there are seven members. And each member is equal to the, another member. There's no one board member who has more sway or has more influence. And we all have an opportunity to be heard equally, whether it's at the board table or whether it's access to Dane and asking questions and asking for further information. We all have the opportunity to do that. And in fact, it is our obligation to ask questions when something's not clear and to at the table, express our opinions when, when called upon. And we are able to that way come to the table with some understanding. So we ask our questions before board meetings. We read the packets, the same information that is made public. We are expected to read all of that and understand it and be able to come to the board table to make effective decisions. And it's important to understand that no one person sways a vote. It is the consensus of the seven board members that gets us to our final result. And you know, in the background of all of that, as we've touched on, the board is really sort of the upper level view of the district. We don't micromanage. It's Dane's job to manage his team. We talk about the what of the school district, what should be done. Dane is our CEO and he and his team figure out how to do that. And the strategic plan is, is the guiding light to that as Dane alluded to. It gives us the what? And the board supports that, asks questions to move us in that direction, takes votes, makes decisions based on that. And, and then Dane and his team do the work through, through through their expertise and the policies that guide them. They, they get to the how to carry out the what? If that makes sense.
Yeah, and it all comes back, it all comes back to this, right? It's all about the children. The, the success of the students in our district, the excellence in their development, both from a an academic as well as a social and emotional learning aspect, which are core and central to District 34 values are effectively the, the yardstick that is measured by board success. And that's what we come back to. It's core and central to the strategic plan. And that commitment is what we bring into the conversations that it's about all children, every children, every child in our district matters. And every child's success is the core and central mission for board members in, in our conversations. Kathy, one of the things too that I think is, I want to share with this group, it was shared at the last board meeting, our board has been recognized for governance and, and excellence. And that not every school board gets this recognition, but the ISB did recognize and within North Cook, the effectiveness of the District 34 Board of Education for governance behaviors and effectively the, the execution of the effective behaviors for governance in, in 2021. And so we're, we're proud of and also want to continue to, to be recognized for and work very diligently to continue to execute and maintain and manage within, within our own board for really the benefit of the community. Kathy?
So I a really important thing to consider for anybody that's running, considering running for the board is what kind of commitment is it? What can you expect if you are elected? How much time will it take to be a board member? And as I said before, what you might have seen at board meetings, sometimes for them, for a particular month that we, you know, maybe it's a long meeting and that's where we have spent most of our time. But usually the board meeting is just a part of our time because in addition to board meetings, we all have committee assignments. Over the years, I've served on many committees, Personnel Committee, Education Committee, Representatives to PTA Council, the True North Board Representative. So all of those are additional meetings that we prepare for and attend. And we also spend time reviewing the information we need to know. Each board member has to acquire quite a bit of knowledge about the district. We've given you an overview and, and some of you have a good working knowledge of the district from being involved in the community and from watching board meetings. But once you become a board member, it there's, you realize there's even more to learn. So realistically, especially in the beginning, there's quite a bit of time involved just in reading your board packet, which again is the all the things that are on the agenda that are published publicly. We get a weekly update from Dane. We have to read that, digest it, submit any questions. So all of that actually takes more time than what we do at the board table. You know, our slide shows 15 to 20 hours per month. I, I would say that when you first come on the board, it would be 20 plus. There are an awful lot of acronyms to learn, a lot of a lot of different subject matters that come up, whether be the budget or English as a second language students or, you know, there's just so many, you know, referendum projects. There's so many varied topics that you have to educate yourself about that I would say in the beginning, it's, it's probably more than 20 hours a month to be fair, but as you get more comfortable, that number goes down. So that just gives you a little bit of a, an idea of the time commitment. But in addition to the time commitment, there is also what you also need is a certain skill set and mindset to be an effective board member. And the most important thing is to have an open mindset to learn, to respectfully listen to other people's points of views. You have to understand that you represent the entire community. You might be from a neighborhood, but you don't represent your neighborhood. You represent the entire community, which includes not just people who are parents of D34 students, but in times there are parents of of high schoolers or college kids or people who are, don't have any actual connection to the district. We still represent them because we are entrusted with their tax dollars. And a healthy school district is good for the entire community. It, it strengthens the desire, desirability of our community to live here. So although we are just a school board, what we do affects more than just what happens in our classrooms. I, well, another thing that's actually on the slide is supporting the work of administration and staff. So another thing to kind of understand is that the relationship between the board and superintendent and administration is not adversarial. It is a collaboration as our district does a lot of things with that collaboration mindset and this is no different. And this actually is a, something that's encouraged at every school board in the state and possibly I would say probably in the country, that it be a collaborative effort. Once it becomes adversarial, it becomes dysfunctional. And in the end, it is our students who suffer the most because then we are focused on adult to adult problems versus paying attention to our kids. So that's very important to understand going into it, that the dynamic of the work.
Well, now I'll just add one thing, if I may. I think, I think the second was bold is, is an important one. Kathy is around the commitment of the board members to do the work. Everybody brings a different perspective, skill set, experience, expertise, set of questions. And one of the enablers for the high functioning board that, that currently we have in District 34 is the ability to have healthy conflict in terms of discussion and also to work through that in order to get to a resolution such that we do have one voice as kind of Natalie highlighted early on in that we can work through and we can understand, we need to ask questions of each other. But to do that, it comes with an intention of getting to the best possible answer for everybody. I think that's an important thing that is tough to articulate any other way. But it is ultimately come down to the respecting the perspective of each other, knowing that we all have the same motivation. We just view things differently.
Yes. And so the requirements to run are pretty obvious. They're established not by our school board, but by Illinois School Code, which is law. Must be a US citizen, a resident of Illinois, and you must be living in the school district for one year preceding the election. 18 years of age and a registered voter. Again, these aren't our rules. This is the state of Illinois's rules. And then after the election, new board members are obligated and required by Illinois, Illinois School Code again, to acquire certain training before you begin your work as a school board member. And one very important aspect of your training would be to learn about the Open Meetings Act, which governs all public bodies that take votes and take taxpayer dollars. It requires that our decisions be made in public so that the public can come and hear and learn and listen and comment about the things that we that we discuss and vote on. And certain things are required to be discussed in closed session. So those are exceptions to the Open Meeting Act. I believe there are 14 exceptions. And school board members have to be trained in what those exceptions are. And they're basically just on a very basic level, they involve things that need to be kept confidential to preserve a privacy right by, by some stakeholder. Generally speaking, you'll also be required to do personal professional development training and Para Training, which is Performance Evaluation Reform Act. So there are seminars that you can sign up for when you will receive your training and you get a certificate that proves that you have done those, that training. In addition to that, you will participate in a school board orientation that is led by Dr. Deli and a member of the school board, usually the school board president joins Dr. Deli in onboarding new school board members. And every year our board participates in a self-evaluation project, process. We just did that in August. So a new school board member coming after a few months of being sworn in in May, you will participate in that evaluation process, which sets the norm for the group, working norms on how to do the work of a school board member. So we have the public face of District 34. So most people who are school board members happen to be parents as well, whether it's in D34 or at the high school, school district or in college. But being a parent is very different from being a board member. And when you speak, you have to understand that when you speak with people, they will see you with your board hat on. Even if you are acting as a parent in that moment, it's almost impossible to take that board hat off because as you're out and about in the community, people will recognize you. And so, and sometimes want to have conversations with you about school board related matters. It's important that you personally be cognizant of the fact that when you speak, It's important that you personally be cognizant of the fact that when you speak, it you it will be perceived that you are speaking as a school board member, not as a parent. And and as the last line says, perception is reality. So it's important that you are aware of that. And remember, when you do, when you are out and about and speaking, it is seven members on the board. You have an opinion. Once a vote is taken, you're obligated to not undermine the the majority vote of the board. So that's something to be cognizant of as well. And, you know, social media has made everybody's life more complicated, definitely for school board members. So another thing to consider is your social media presence. If you become a school board member, it is important that when you use social media, that if you are using it as a private citizen, that that be incredibly clear to people that you're speaking as a private citizen at that point and not as a school board member, because things can be misinterpreted. And then it causes dysfunction among board members and and it it will cause more trouble than whatever it is that you wanted to post on on social media. So it's really important to be very conscious of what your presence on social media is once you become a school board member.
All right. So the process, I get to summarize the process in a couple of just different deadlines. And then I'm going to be able to invite it to another speaker into the conversation. So key dates. So as of September 20th, individuals that are interested in running for school board need to begin clicking signatures of at least 50 qualified registered in district voters to be able to petition and then file their candidacy papers. The candidacy candidacy paper filing is between December 12th and December 19th. Don't think it's 2029, but we'll be able to make sure that it's in this election cycle, which is 2022. The candidacy papers have to be filed within a registered county district, I think, courthouse. So while there's one over by Old Orchard, that's not the one you have to use. I think there's a couple of different filing locations and then else it's all included in the FAQ information for the candidacy. And then Election Day is April 4th, 2023. So the last stuff that has to go in between there for individual candidates. But these are at least the kind of the necessary elements to be included on the ballot and to be eligible as a candidate for the election next April. With that, I do believe we have one of the caucus representatives on. Brandy, I think I saw your name. Kathy.
Let me, yes. Pull the head of the caucus over who can share information about the caucus process that's been in this district for quite a while. Okay. All right.
Oh, wow, I look cool. Okay, I don't think you can see me, can you?
No, if you want to change your background, you can click on that stop video button and that little carrot will allow you to select no background or you can just.
Okay, okay, is it if I just talked to you because I can't figure that out and I don't want to waste anybody's time?
Absolutely.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Yes, I am a former PTA president and I've had three kids go through District 34 and thrilled, love, so grateful to be part of the school district. And so many, many years ago, I was invited to, when I first learned about the caucus process, I thought it was pretty remarkable because I actually didn't know much about it. But it's has been around from the 1950s. Many of the communities on the North Shore of Chicago have these. They're completely independent from the district and the board. We don't. We have bylaws and but we do not report or in any way or follow directions from the district or the board. There are about, we're just under 60 members and there's representation from each precinct. There's three different members from each precinct, two voting members and a like an alternate. The whole goal is just to understand who's on our board, what the what skill sets are are important to be an effective board member, what the district is is dealing with, kind of understanding all this stuff about what they were talking about, about like just appropriate skill sets that even helped you be an effective board member. And we go through a process where we we kind of open it open it up and we accept applications and we go through a process where, you know, I hate the word interview. That's so serious. We basically just want to understand, you know, the thought process behind why people want to run, like what their intentions are, just to make, you know, we hope that people step forward because they want to serve, period, and help our district be as strong as it can be. The caucus then, I I'm as the caucus president, I'm kind of lucky. I'm the one person who doesn't vote. So I don't really get to say anything, but I get to just kind of help manage the process and and welcome people who who are interested in it, answer their questions and help shepherd them through the process. Our goal is that we're so grateful for the people who step forward to run. Many of our former board members have said they would not have run for the board if it were not for a caucus process because we try to help them. We try to help with their, once they're slated, we help with their all their filing and getting, we actually file for the candidates that are endorsed. Our candidates don't have to do that. And then we promote the slate. We have a whole process that's happening this fall. We have an email. I don't know if, yeah, there it is. D34caucus@, actually, well, that's the website and there's a whole bunch of info on the website. And we also have an email address, which is d34caucus@gmail.com. And we'll answer anything about the process and kind of help understand the timing. Well, at present, our caucus date this year will be November 29th. And it's one night where anybody who is interested will come before the caucus to answer some questions and talk about how they think, you know, they would like to contribute. And then it's a slating process and then we go from there. So that date is set in stone. That's November 29th. And if you have any questions, you can feel free to reach out via that email that you can also find on that website there and we can help explain the process to anybody.
Brandy, there's a question and you said the caucus has been around for about 50 years. So maybe you know this answer. How was it decided that a caucus system would be used to slate board members? And did residents have a say in implementing this process?
Well, I know you can't see me, but I was not around in the 50s. So I, and and actually, like when when I was started like helping this team of volunteers, I started doing my own research to kind of understand a little bit more about that history. We're actually even one of the newer ones. So a lot of the communities on the North Shore, they've been around even longer. I have no clue how it started. And I think that I think that the reality is, and with all due respect, I think there are, I am an active engaged citizen. And there have been times when my kids were younger that I can recall showing up for voting day. And I'm like, I don't know who any of those board members are. And so the goal is to try to help to do the work of the community. So because a lot of times it's not just pick a name or who have the most yard signs, to be frank. It's our decisions need to be a little bit more thoughtful than that. And and that's, I think, why the caucus process has endured in most of the communities around the North Shore. Because it 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 tends to work. I did have an in-between, before Dr. Deli joined us, we had a like interim superintendent during one year. And I remember the one gentleman saying to me that it, communities that lose their caucus can suffer because it just becomes a little bit of a different free for all in a sense. So I don't know. I have no clue. All I know is that I'm just a volunteer who got found this to be very important work. And I've done it for many years. I'm excited that this year I'm going to be having somebody who will be shadowing me. I've been doing this, I think, 10 years. So I've got two, 225, the GBS, and my last little guy is at Springman. So but it's important work and so and it's rewarding. So that's kind of why I've been doing it. But I'm sorry to say that I really have no clue how this all started many, many years ago.
And it's a community driven process. The district doesn't dictate that there that a caucus forms or provides any service. This is something that's community driven.
Correct. And you don't have to have kids in District 34 to be on the caucus. We have people that are have OLPH kids. We have people that don't have kids. You know, the, it's so important to have a strong Board of Ed, we believe, because it maintains your property values. The health of your public school system is critical to maintaining your property values. So we welcome onto the caucus anybody who owns a home or I'm, I, well, yeah, as a taxpayer in in the in the in the different precincts.
And if someone who's on this webinar chooses not to run for the board, but still wants to make a contribution, how do they join the caucus? Would they visit the website? And is there that information on the website?
Yes, absolutely. And we have several, we have precincts that don't have representation and our, our, I my goal is always has been outreach outreach for 10 years. I mean, I would love every single precinct to have representation. But people are busy, right? We all got kids and jobs and all that good stuff. But yeah, they, if there's a spot, if somebody calls the caucus leadership and says, raises their hand, you're on. And the only reason you wouldn't be on is if you're the spots in your precincts are already filled. So it is absolutely first come, first served. And we welcome everybody to be part of this process.
And one other question for you, Brandy, that you may have in your record somewhere or may have on your memory. How many candidates in the past 10 years have won a board seat using the caucus process?
I don't, if you mean, I don't, I don't think anybody has one that has has ever and I might be crazy, but I don't think anybody has actually been voted on and successful in the election if they have not gone through the caucus process. I can't recall that, but I I don't think that's happened. We usually, you know, we we will oftentimes, like we may have eight people come forward and the caucus, you know, only there's four spots open. And quite, here's the great news. At least since I've been involved in this, we always have more amazing candidates that are raising their hands to serve than we have spots open every single time. And that is a testament to the community that we live in and that the amazing parents that are part of our community that raise their hands to serve. And it's hard because we don't have a spot for all of them and every single season. Unfortunately, I get to make the phone call, just kidding. But called the people that have kindly raised their hands to generously serve and which is just a gift. And we usually say, can you come back next time? Because we always need good folks who are willing to serve. So I don't know. Hope that answers the question a little bit.
All right. Thank you, Brandy. I will pull you off the panel. But people can find more information at d34caucus.org.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for the questions. I appreciate it.
Okay. And just to clarification, when, once the caucus slates candidates, that becomes a political action. So the district does not at that point share information in following our policy on political activity. So we don't share information about slated candidates or the or the slate from the caucus or provide them with any resources once that becomes political action. And I will take over the last of the information about how folks can learn more. Your main source of getting the details of the dates and the application, the candidacy process is through the Illinois Association of School Boards, iasb.com. They have a trove of information for potential candidates and for sitting board members. Right now, they are doing a webinar series on navigating running for the school board. There is a recording posted at iasb.com/livestream about the petition circulation process. Coming up next week, Statement of Economic Interest. There's a webinar on that October 22nd at noon. Tune in November 30th at 6:30 PM to learn about petition filing. And on December 8th at noon, Understanding the Board Member's Role. So you can watch those live at iasb.com/livestream or they will be posted after they air. You could learn more. The Candidates Guide has all the nitty gritty details. And you can find that either scanning that QR code that's there or visiting tinyurl.com/iasbcandidate. So that whole Candidates Guide has much information for potential candidates about the process of becoming a board member and the whole election cycle. It's specific to 2023. So you'll see all the dates that we shared. And if there are any more details in there about dates and schedules, they will be in that Candidates Guide that you can access. We will be sharing these slides and this presentation as well for you to look back on. And right now, we will turn to our questions. I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And